All right, well, let's get started. Welcome to the Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-four Planning Commission Working Session Meeting. For detailed information on meeting procedures, please refer to the full printed meeting agenda provided. It is not provided because we are digital, but it is available in Legisstar. We will start our meeting this evening with public comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any item. We will first, we will hear from remote participants. You can indicate your interest in speaking by raising your hand in Zoom and city staff will identify you using the name that you have in Zoom. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone who has joined the meeting who would like to address? It looks like we do have one attendee?
Uh, yes, Mayor of Lower Town, you have permission to address the planning commission.
Good evening. This is Tom Stalberg, calling from one-two-zero-two Traver Street in Ann Arbor. Uh, for those who don't know, uh, my background is in land development. I used to develop subdivisions. Uh, all across Oakland County, multiple communities, did multiple rezonings. I've been before Ann Arbor's ZBA even. I spent six years on the Ann Arbor Historic District Commission, so I know how boards and commissions work. And I'm going to talk in general, not in specifics about tonight. But one of the things that distinguishes zoning is that we have State Enabling Act that allows us to do certain things. I won't go into those details, but the ZBA separated out from council decisions for specific reasons. The ZBA has different criteria. And ZBA has, um, a different appeal. And there's reasons for all that. This is the public that we're dealing with. This is the public's business. And I'm a strong believer that the public's business should be done in front of the public. And I think even if there's a high rate of approvals, that there's a lot to be learned. By the public and watching these meetings. When I was a developer of subdivisions, I used to watch. Religiously, the meetings in the communities we developed and in the communities we didn't yet develop in, but desire to develop in, to learn. What the current bodies, Council, Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, what their opinions and comments were. Not just the outcomes of their votes. It was very educational and helped us to design better projects. It helped us to come in from the start with a project. That we knew would be what the community was looking for. Some of you may or may not know that, uh, there was a, an approval of a Morningside Lower Town Development now called, uh. I forget what it's called now. Anyhow, um, there was a lawsuit over that and one of the. Things that happened in the settlement of that lawsuit was the planned project part of our. UDC had to be eliminated. It was not in compliance with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. And one of the things that it did. Was it allowed counsel to cross over under the turf of the zoning board of appeals, uh, inappropriately illegally. So we have to be really carefully, careful if we want to now do some things administratively to make sure that we're complying. With the state law, with the act that allows us to even have zoning. And we should be very careful about the business that we do. Behind the scenes versus what we do in front of the public eye. Even if we have a high percentage of approvals, you know, when I was on the HDC, we approved the vast majority of things that came to us. But the projects were better because.
I'm sorry, your time has elapsed, Mr. Stalberg. I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, well, I will introduce our single agenda for this evening. I do believe there is a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. Before we conclude, uh, so, um, staff presents ordinance revisions to section five dot thirty-two dot two related to non-conforming structures. In residential districts, these are presented in response to a request by the zoning board of appeals, ZBA. To eliminate the requirements for ZBA approval for certain improvements to non-conforming structures. The proposed amendment will allow administrative approval by the planning manager or designee. To approve an alteration defined as a change that increases floor area, the number of dwelling units, or the exterior dimensions of a building. That does not extend closer to the lot line, does not create any new non-conformities. And complies with all other zoning district dimension standards. And so we have a staff presentation by John Barrett. And I think you have control of the meeting. So if you would start by introducing yourself and. Giving us a little bit of background about what you do and how you interface with the public.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening. Uh, my name is John Barrett. I'm the zoning coordinator for the city of Ann Arbor. I've been in my current position for approximately nine years. Um, I have, uh. Since I don't know many of you, I'll just go ahead and break down. My job responsibilities and it comes in about four different core components. One of the components is, um, I am the staff liaison to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, with that responsibility, I present. All variance and alteration to non-conforming structures and appeals to the zoning board of appeals and, um. I basically run, run that board. One of the other, uh, components of my job is. Code enforcement. I respond to complaints by citizens, um, developers, contractors and the like. And I go out and make inspections in the field and I, um, respond accordingly to if there is a violation. Um, one of the other, uh, main core responsibilities I do is I review all the permits that come into the city for, um, building, uh, permits and zoning permits. And review them for compliance with the Unified Development Code. And lastly, one of my last core components is what I get a lot of is, uh, customer service, a lot of emails, phone calls. Hey, John, what can I do with my property? I want to build a deck. I want to build a shed. I want to build an ADU. I want to build a fence. So all those types of, um, a lot of home improvement projects, if you may, um, come my way. And so I respond. To citizens and that helps them apply for building permits and then I'll see their building permit and review it. With that being said, um, I'm not sure if anyone has any questions about that. We can, you can take questions, uh, later on. And I will start my presentation. And does everyone see the PowerPoint? I'm getting the thumbs up. So, uh, reason why we're here tonight is because we're looking at, um, making some modifications to section five point thirty-two point two. Alteration to a non-conforming structure as to the text amendment proposal. Uh, history of the item, uh, this past spring and around March, the ZBA, uh. Contacted me and during a meeting asked that we take a, uh, examination of this section of code. And address the high volume of petitions that, um, that were related to this section of code that were coming to the ZBA. One to two a month and, yes.
I think your slide isn't advancing. Is that why you raised your hand? Ally, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think if I look at the slides, it seems like you want to be on slide three, but we're still seeing the title slide.
Okay.
Thanks. Oh, there we go. Yep.
Eric, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, yeah, so we were, we're getting a high volume of, uh, these types of applications. And many of them were related to. What, um. Owners wanting to put an additional unit in a basement or an attic. And the board, uh, many of the members of the board felt like these were, um, these applications were getting approved. Uh, and that there wasn't, wasn't any impact or that they didn't need to see these as a result because. It's adding another unit and habitable space into an existing empty attic or basement. There's also been a shift in the planning philosophy and non-conformities, uh, density and importance of, uh, housing availability. This is helping to create additional, uh, units up to four, uh, in a multi-family residential district. If a, um, a unit, a house could not have, um, go up to five, once you get five units, you'll have to site plan. Let's say, uh, existing R four C home that's non-conforming, uh, has an empty basement and they want to come before the, um. They want to apply for a building permit to add a new unit to make it four units. In order to do that, since it's non-conforming, they would have to go to the ZBA. Alterations before the ZBA, they have a low threshold and findings of facts and the only finding of fact, unlike a variance, a variance has five findings of facts. Alterations only have one and that it will not have a negative impact on the adjacent properties. In twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four petitions for non-conforming structures, we had twenty-one of them since January twenty twenty-three and all of them were approved. For one, non-conforming structure with an interior alteration to habitable space, what it is is, uh, like I've also kind of previously explained, it's converting non-habitable space exist. That's existing in a basement or attic typically, uh, into habitable space and adding a new unit. What it's not, it says it's, uh, not creating new bedrooms. You can add a, um. It's obviously creating new bedrooms in the, in a new unit, but if you had an existing, uh, non-conforming property and you just wanted to, say you had a two hundred square foot bedroom and the rental housing code requires you to have. One hundred square feet, you could devise that, divide that space into an additional bedroom. Uh, and make a demising wall, a separated wall. You don't need to go to the ZBA for that. That would be done with a building permit. So that's kind of like the difference between creating a new unit and just creating, uh, bedrooms in existing units. One of the examples that we had here was that ten thirty-three Packard. Uh, the property was not conforming because it was in this R four C district and it didn't meet the requirements for the lot area, which is eighty-five hundred square feet. Didn't meet the lot width of sixty feet. It was only fifty feet. And it didn't meet the side setback along the eastern side lot line, uh, of twelve feet. It was only one point one foot. So it was not conforming for lot area, lot width and lot, uh, or side setbacks. Uh, UDC, according to five point thirty-two, who says that not, that new habitable space in the non-conforming property requires ZBA approval. But what they wanted to do is they wanted to create a new, uh, unit, new habitable space in the basement, and this will be required to go to ZBA. This is, uh, the floor plan that they submitted with the application. As you can see, it was non-hatable. It was just a, um, existing old. Eighty-year-old cellar. This is what they wanted to do. They wanted to, um, square up the, um, walls which didn't go any closer to any of the lot lines. And then create six new bedrooms, a living room. This is mislabeled, the architect that should have said living room is their bedroom. The kitchen and a bathroom and another bathroom. So it'd be a six-bedroom, two-bathroom unit in the basement. Obviously upgrading all the mechanical and electricals and adding window wells, uh, for the, and for safety and egress. Like I said, they proposed this new six-bedroom unit found, uh, foundation being squared off. They weren't changing the footprint. And as the amendment moves forward, projects like this could be approved administratively without having to go to the zoning board of appeals. Without having to obtain a survey, without having to pay a thousand dollar application fee and without having to, to wait one to two months to go to the ZBA. This was a picture of the, um, of the existing home at ten thirty-three Packard. And this is what they, uh, kind of a proposed conceptual design, what they were going to do with it. And this is one that was directly across the street. That was a previous project that was completed. Uh, part two, there's a different type of non-conforming structure and that's one with an addition. Typically an existing structure that does not meet required setbacks. Last month, two oh seven North State Street, uh, it was in the historic district. They received HDC approval. What they wanted to do is add an addition to the rear one-story portion of the residence. Because it, uh, it was a non-conforming property, didn't meet, uh, setbacks, didn't meet lot width and lot area. And what they wanted to do on the back of it, they just wanted to add the petition going straight up. Another type of, uh, a non-conforming property that wanted to do an addition that didn't encroach any further into a, uh, setback was at three oh five. Property was not conforming for lot area and front setback. Yet owners wanted to pose a two-story addition, which is highlighted, uh, each, uh. Each, um, portion of the story was going to have a bathroom and there was going to be so, it was a two-story addition with two bathrooms. One new bathroom for each, uh, floor in the duplex. You can see it was going to be. And set actually about a foot inside the existing front lot line as this house faces beak. It wasn't going to encroach any further, though it didn't encroach any further than the front setback, but doesn't meet the front setback. It was an alteration to a non-conforming structure. Which is an addition type, not an interior. This was the floor plan of the application that they submitted. You can see the highlighted proposed addition, uh, the bathroom. This was another type of the same, um, type of, uh, alteration request. It was in addition to, uh, the side of this home. This was on Fair Oaks Parkway. The property runs east to west. The, the Fair Oaks runs north-south. And the envelope of the home, the back property line is right here in the dash lot line. And the existing structure, almost eighty percent of it was non-conforming because it didn't meet the rear setback. But what they wanted to do was they just wanted to put a sunroom on the side of this home. They weren't going to encroach any further on the rear lot line, like it says, since the entire structure is non-conforming. And this proposed sunroom wouldn't meet this forty-foot setback. They needed to go to the ZBA. And this was the addition. You can see the screened porch off the side of the home. This was eventually approved by the DBA because it didn't encroach any further. It wasn't going to have any negative impacts on the, uh, adjacent properties. And, uh, nobody, uh, we didn't receive any negative, uh, feedback from any of the adjoining properties. Here's the text amendment that Mr. Weish, uh, already read this evening. I said, this, um, types of alterations that this text amendment goes forward. Will allow staff to approve these types of interior alterations or, uh, an addition that doesn't increase the non-conformity. Four stipulations that Mr. Weish already read, I will go ahead and read them again. Is if the alteration does not extend any closer to a lot line, any part of the existing non-conforming structure. The alteration does not create a new non-conformity on the lot or in an adjacent lot. The alteration means compliance with all of their dimensional standards of the zoning district for the lot on which it is located. And the alteration will meet all other code and organs requirements. Conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approval of the text amendment is proposed by the ZBA. The text amendment will allow administrative approval of permits and streamline the process for homeowners and developers. And this text amendment will also increase density and housing options, uh, in multi-family districts. That concludes my presentation at this time. Uh, I have contact information here as well. And I can take any questions that you may have.
All right, just to remind the public, uh, this is a working session, so we won't be taking any, um, affirmative or. That's denial, uh, action during our meeting. Uh, it's mostly just to give feedback, uh, to staff. Before it comes back to our agenda, uh, for further action. So with that, who would like to get us started in our discussion? Thank you, Mr. Barrett, for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, all about streamlining. Um, that was really helpful. Just your summary at the end, um, of the proposed amendment. And I'm just curious, those were great examples you gave. Has there been an instance where. A project has met all of those criteria, but the ZBA chose not to approve it? For other reasons, or has this been pretty well scrubbed for projects that have come through?
Yeah, I, I can't think of an alteration that hasn't been approved in the last eight or nine years. Um, I went back, you know, I, I can't fit, nothing can jumps out at me in the last twenty-one, like I said, have been approved. And we've had a couple of members on the board that, uh. Commissioner Weatherby might remember or know, and, um, since she's on the ZBA as well. And they actually. You know, one of them worked for, as a planner for another community and they said, John, you know, this would. Wouldn't happen at this X community. Uh, we, we really think, you know. To require applicants, homeowners, developers, contractors to come to ZBA through this process, just to put, just to finish a basement. They just thought that. They didn't need, they didn't, as a board, they didn't need to see these because they, the threshold for this, um, requirement of. It was so low, only one finding of fact, rather than a variance of five. Like I said, the only variances. It's not going to have a negative impact on the neighbors. If you have one of these types of properties along Packer or. You know, Dewey in a high student rental neighborhood, it's really not going to have an impact on the adjacent properties because they're all homogeneous type uses. And so. They, we never have any negative feedback towards them really. So we just, that they approached me and were really adamant, said, John, we really want you to move forward with. Changing this, so these don't have to come to the ZBA anymore.
It sounds like it's not necessarily like what we're doing is not a best practice that other communities are doing. Other communities are in fact. Doing what you're proposing now and administratively approving.
Some of the, yeah, I believe some of them are, yeah, and. Some of those, some of these communities that have the same type of, um. High student rental rates, um, similar types of neighborhoods has, you know, hit maybe, uh. Neighborhoods next in close proximity to universities.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Mills.
Thank you for bringing this. Well, thank you for bringing this before us. Um, I. I, I think that the presentation laid it out really well. One of the questions that I had, and I don't want to make you go back any farther in time. But I think it would be helpful when we see this next time, if out of the twenty-three, knowing. What the zoning districts were in each one, because you alluded to this, but it feels to me like there's probably an awful lot of R four C. Is that?
That's accurate. That is an accurate, yep.
Which is something, just for the rest of the commissioners, we've talked about this before. A couple of years ago, I feel like we went through and tried to. Alleviate some of the non-conforming lots status in a whole bunch of our. One of the other R districts. And a lot, I remember a lot of the non-conforming lots that remain are in R four C. And so, um. In addition to cleaning this up, because I'm imagining that they're not all R four C, um. Making this make sense, I think, is super wise and seeing if there might be opportunities to create. Fewer non-conformities, at least discuss it would be useful potentially. Um.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just to expand on that a little bit, most of them, like you said, are R four Cs, but there are the occasional ones, um, like the Fair Oaks, uh, Parkway example where. Somebody wants to do a home improvement project with a screened in porch and they can't because they don't meet that rear setback. I have had several, um. That, uh, want to do a second story addition. And the home, let's say the, the average front setback is twenty-five feet and the homes at, sit cited at twenty-three feet. So they're encroaching two feet into that average setback. So they had to come to ZBA to do a, a second story addition. I've had several of those. As well. So any type of single-family district that has a, a, a. Project where they want to do a home improvement, and if there's the slightest, um, non-conformity, they have to go to ZBA as well.
Yeah. So in my mind. Your justification is clear for this. I'm just thinking while you've already got the data of the twenty-three projects. Putting it on the record of how many of those are actually, because you're not going to see as many of these, hopefully in the R four C going forward, but also. Don't think that this solves all of the R four C problems. And so knowing that, I think will help, um. And maybe Commissioner Norton is going to do this because I pulled up the, the MZEA, um, to see what. It says about non-conformities. And so Commissioner Norton, if you were going to do that, I won't try to play lawyer. Okay, this is my sense, which is one twenty-five point, uh, it's section two oh eight, effectively. Non-lawyer reading is local governments, if you want to extend the non-conformity. Can say how to do that in your zoning ordinance or effectively how you're going to deal with alterations on a non-conforming structure. And that's what we're doing. It, it doesn't, don't read it as it stipulates that it has to go to the zoning board of appeals. It's just historically, we have chosen that. And so I think we can choose not to, um, but I would welcome. Lawyer amendment on that, but I'll just leave that out there.
Commissioner Mills, what section was that again?
I see it as section two oh eight. So at least I'm, I've pulled up the MSU. Version of the zoning enabling act because it's easier to Google and read and it's. Three-two-zero-eight.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Norton.
A couple of things. I think that's right. There's. Local governments have to recognize non-conforming uses and allow them to continue, but they've got some flexibility in how they deal with them. Um, the spirit is to not perpetuate non-conformities you really want to get rid of. Otherwise, why do you, why are they non-conformities? And a good rule of thumb is if you're having to constantly deal with non-conforming uses or something, the ZBA is constantly having to act on a species of problems. That really suggests you should fix the zoning code, especially if they're always being approved. Why are we regulating them improperly in the first case? So I, I would second. Commissioner Mills suggesting that maybe this suggests I need to go back and revisit the code. To see if there are ways we can tweak it to make it work better, so that we don't have these kind of constant things popping up. Having said that, I do have two questions, uh, from Mr. Barrett. One is. If these were not non-conforming structures and somebody came in and wanted to do the same kind of thing, how would that be treated? That's the first question. And then the second question is if we, if the city adopts these changes. Is the way that you as the administrator would determine if there's a negative impact to the neighbors, any different than the way the ZBA would have done it? Or how, how, how do they normally determine if there's an impact to the neighbors and? How would you do it if you're now doing it administratively? I hope those questions make sense.
Uh, yeah. So to the, the first or the second point, so this text amendment would basically eliminate. That, that requirement. So there, I wouldn't be, when I'm reviewing a permit, I wouldn't be analyzing whether there was a negative impact to adjacent properties or not, because this would. Afford, uh, this would eliminate just that provision.
But you would still have to approve the request for the alteration, correct? I mean, I didn't read that amendment closely enough.
So. I would it come in, uh, if it doesn't go through ZBA, what would be the first contact with the city? Is that what you're interested in?
How is it being approved now?
So i- if it was, if it, if this. Provision of this tax amendment is approved, then that would eliminate this. Non-conformity alteration requirement. And then it would just come in as a building permit. It would be reviewed by staff administratively. And so there wouldn't, we wouldn't, while we were reviewing it, we wouldn't be looking at whether there was a negative impact on adjacent property owners or not.
You would be looking at these four aspects.
We would, it would be, it would be a use by right if it met the zoning ordinance that. If it was, say, um, an R four C property, even though it was non-conforming and it had three units. They would be allowed to add a new unit in the basement or the attic up to the four, which is the threshold. Five is requires site plan. But then we could approve it administratively since it's four units or less in a R four C property, um, even though it's non-conforming. It's just allowing new, a new unit, new habitable space in either the attic or the, uh, basement or somewhere in the interior.
And the thinking is.
As long as the footprint of the structure doesn't change, there's no new additions.
And the ZBA folks recommending this are comfortable because in fact. None of the projects they've dealt with have had negative impacts on the neighbors. So now we're forced.
We've received very little to none, no, um, feedback on, on these types of projects.
Okay. Good. And then the first question was if it's not a non-conforming structure and they want to do one of these kinds of, you know. Fix a basement up or something, how is that normally treated?
Through a residential building permit.
Just a building permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I'm new, new to this. Thank. Okay, I'm new, new to this. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Weatherby and then Commissioner, Councilmember Dish.
Yeah, I think for me as someone who sits on the ZBA, the Impact neighbors is a really tricky one because even if someone wrote in and said it impacts me, I, I, there's not a good way of Saying, well, do you just not like the idea of four more people living next to you? Or Does it really impact? You know, there's not a very clear Statement of what impact really would mean. And so I think You know, if we wanted to keep it in, it would For the ZBA members, I think it would be helpful to do What is impact? What is, you know, and at that point, it just starts to be kind of more of a You know, I don't like it, so I'm gonna say Don't build it. But the fact that those things aren't coming up very much, if at all, I think shows that this is, is just rarely, uh, Really an issue. And if that's the only thing that we're looking at and The board that has to determine that doesn't have clear Statement of what impact the neighbors is, whether it's more traffic or more people or noise or You know, I, I think it makes it very, very difficult for the ZBA to say, no, this isn't. We, we're not going to approve it because it adds people, like it just becomes a difficult thing. And I think Commissioner Mills, I think to your point, at least the last time I checked, and I know some changes have had, but it was very high. R4C is like 80% non-conforming, 85% non-conforming, something really astronomical. So These could come up just all the time for, because The, the buildings, even though they're in historic, many of them are kind of in historic setting with the historic Situation on the lots, we've changed everything around them over the years. And so They're, they're non-conforming, kind of aspirationally non-conforming That is no longer our aspiration. So I think those are my comments about this.
Yeah. Could I just follow up onto your observation really quickly? Mr. Barrett, you might want to Add to your memo, your analysis, both points, one that No, there haven't been neighbor complaints, so it's kind of a non-issue. And then beyond that, even if there were, there's no good, There are no good criteria to figure out how you would analyze that anyway. It's a problematic thing to do. So those are really two good reasons for doing away with that requirement. And so I think adding that to your analysis might help a little bit to To further justify why this is moving in the right direction. I hope that makes
Thank you, Commissioner Norton. And if you could, okay, thanks. You just muted. We'll go to you, Mr. Barrett, and then to Commissioner Dish.
Yeah, just kind of expanding on Mr. Norton's Question or statement earlier about how would we, if we didn't Pass this tax amendment, how would we fix the ordinance in order to make these properties less non-conforming? For, especially for the R4C, you really have to Reduce the requirements in the table of, uh, in the, in the district dimension table. You'd have to change the lot area from 8,500 square feet. You'd really have to reduce that down probably to Five or 6,000 feet. The lot width wouldn't be 60 feet anymore, probably be 40 and the setbacks. Even though like you, if you even reduced it down to five feet from 12, You're still going to have a lot of these structures that were built 100 years ago, like the one on Packer, it was only 1.1 feet To the eastern setback. So you're, even though if we did reduce the requirements down on the table, You're still going to have some instances that still we probably wouldn't need it with a reduced district.
Commissioner Dish.
Very much, Chair Weich. So Okay, I'll go back to where I was going to start, but just to respond on Mr. Barrett to what you just said. That is what we did in our, it was either R4A or R4B. I think it's R4B. We addressed the The lot area non-conformities and we reduced the minimum lot area so that It would be possible for people to build to the density that was permitted By the zoning, because the lot area interferes as, as we see in a couple of the examples that you gave us, the The lot area minimums conflict With the Amount of units that are supposed to be allowed there. It prohibits, essentially prohibits them. So So I mean, ideal for Reducing minimum lot areas still further and, but of course, we're going to wait to see what the comprehensive plan Suggest to us about that. And so that would be an appropriate, I think, way to follow up Is wait for the comprehensive plan and then we look at that. And so I had a couple of questions of clarification. I wanted to add a little bit of Just a little bit more context. I think that you, um, You alluded to it when you talk about the shift in planning philosophy on non-conformities. But I think that increasingly we are informed in these decisions by a lot of academic scholarship That has raised awareness about how zoning restrictions often go beyond protecting health and safety to actually protecting exclusivity of neighborhoods by Making it hard to increase density. And our own economic development report Said that we have a lot of provisions in zoning that are just barriers To density and, and these should be addressed. And so I think this is great that we're, uh, that we're looking, you know, that we're taking this Small piece and dealing it with it. Cause I think this is really a very small piece. But, um, I wanted to just clarify a couple of things. So In the staff memo, The description in the staff memo says that the revisions are related to non-conforming structures. Right. Yeah, non-conforming structures in residential districts. But from the text of the proposed text amendment, it looks like it applies specifically to residential, non-conforming buildings only. Not non-conforming buildings generally in residential districts, But residential, non-conforming buildings only. And I wanted to know if that is correct.
That is correct. Yeah. This, this provision would not apply to commercial properties.
Okay. So maybe in the introduction, then it would be good to say, uh, Staff presents ordinance revisions to section five, da, 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 related to residential, non-conforming structures in residential districts. Cause the, the text amendment clearly makes a distinction between Non-residential and residential buildings. And so the description should probably just match that. So we know that. And then Does the text amendment need to specify That The non-conforming structure is located in an R1, R2, R3, or R4 district? Because otherwise there's not, it looks like the text amendment has lined that out. But by lining it out, it no longer restricts. I don't know if it needs to specify that it is just talking about residential structures in residential districts or not. Does anybody else follow what I am catching here? Thank you.
Yeah, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, The way that it's currently written, it restricts to the R1 through four. But the proposal just restricts it to residential. So then that could assume a residential dwelling in a non-residential district Would be subject to this amendment. And I'm I, I followed if that's what you're asking.
Well, actually, I think what I'm asking is It looks like From the way it's lined out, The way it would read is alterations to residential, non-conforming structures. That's the That's the title. An alteration meeting the following standards may be approved by the planning manager. Otherwise, the alteration shall be approved. By the, wait a minute. No, maybe I'm just reading the wrong, I, I'm looking at the staff memo, but what I'm reading feels like it doesn't make any sense. No, no, I think that's right. An alteration meeting the following standards may be approved by the planning manager. Otherwise, the alteration, alteration shall be approved by the ZBA, blah, blah, blah. And then it's the criteria that we're beginning, being given, but it actually doesn't specify that this residential, non-conforming structure needs to be in a residential district. So if the intent is that We're addressing residential, non-conformities in R1, R2, or 3, or R4 districts, or maybe that's not the intent. Maybe we can address Residential, non-conforming structures in any district in the city, which is fine. But in that case, I think the staff memo description is confusing because it does say Or, hmm. Yeah, it just might be, the first line is a little bit confusing of the staff memo. Cause it's
We can try to clear that, clean that up, but I think it, it, it does address Residential properties in all districts.
In all districts. So maybe, I think, I think maybe
It just, it just wouldn't apply to commercial properties and commercial districts.
Understood. I think the, the reason why it might be just confusing is that you are saying That we're revising what is currently About non-conforming structures in residential districts, but part of our revision is to say that this can apply to Residential, non-conformities in all districts. So I think it's, there's just a little bit of, of, um, Uh, of, so, okay. All right. Those are really nitpicky points, but, um, then just, I just wanted to understand. So I was surprised when you said that there just won't be any finding of fact anymore Regarding impact to neighboring properties. And I don't mind that, but I was surprised because in the presentation You went out of the way to state that alterations only have one finding of fact, no negative impact on Adjacent properties. And so I did not understand from the way you presented that. I thought you were saying, well, it's just one, so it's not a really complex decision, so we're not worried about it. But you're actually saying we are removing That finding of fact, because it's actually not a very factual finding. It's actually pretty hard to specify that as a fact in any case of what actually constitutes. So I mean, I might just shift the way the presentation is working because it leads one to think That there is a finding of fact and that is going to carry over. Rather than that, there will not be this finding. It's not like, it's not as if Someone else is making the finding. It's actually that We're not doing that finding anymore. We don't need to. Do you see what I'm saying? You may have understood that I understood that, but I didn't.
Yep. Yeah. So by eliminating the process, it doesn't really eliminate the finding, it just eliminates Them having to go through this process to determine what that finding is.
Okay. So they don't have to determine what the finding is, but the finding is still there.
So if, if they don't have to come to ZBA anymore, There won't be a hearing and the ZBA won't be determining, making a decision based on this finding of fact. So it The process is no longer in place for these types of applications. They just get them administratively approved with a residential building permit.
Okay, so I think
There would still be that finding of fact for say, a commercial property in a commercial district.
Right, right. So I think that For, to be really pedagogical and very transparent, I think it needs to be clear that that's a finding of fact that the ZBA process allows, That the ZBA has a process for. And that taking Out, taking the ZBA process out of the picture For these kinds of non-conformities Means that there's no longer a process to make that finding of fact. But as you just said, That the project's going to be approved through a building permit approval. Because And it's just important to be transparent because otherwise people are going to say, well, you're hiding the fact that no one's gonna, we're not going to be able to Ask. And I don't, I don't think we need to ask, but I think we should make it very clear that, that, that is removed by this because The way it is described, The way it is described, it says that these can be approved by a planning manager. So it sounds like the planning manager Would assess the, this is what you kind of asked, Dick, is how would you assess that? That's what elicited John, uh, Mr. Barrett's answer that It doesn't need to be assessed anymore. You asked, how would the planning manager do it differently? And so I just think we need to be really clear about that upfront. Um, I'm not sure that I'm being clear, but I'm just trying to point out That it, that we want to make sure everybody understands what we are doing. And I'm not raising an objection to it. Um, I just don't think it was fully clear.
So to understand what you are offering, Councilmember Dish, you'd like the Staff memo to be updated if, if and when it returns. Uh, to clarify that, uh, to be explicit That there will be a change in the procedure from The single finding of fact to the discretion of the planning manager, so that that is just clearly articulated. Well, I guess it's not the discretion of the planning manager because it will be the four criteria. So it's just being removed.
Right. The finding of fact is being removed for residential, non-conformities. Yes, exactly.
Does that make sense, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, you all want to follow up before I call on the others? Okay.
No, I, I don't have anything else to add.
All right, Commissioner Mills, go ahead, jump in and then we'll go to you, Commissioner Norton after Mills.
It's on this. Is that okay?
I, yeah, it's It's free flowing. There's some order.
Um, Thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Dish, because it made me look at the text a little bit more. And it also made me go back To a question that, I don't know, one of the other commissioners asked earlier. In the, in the amendment, The way that I'm reading this, I, I'm wondering, um, It says that the planning manager may approve. And that suggests conditions that I feel, it suggests discretion that I am taking away from this conversation. We don't want to say. The way that I understand our conversation is the planning manager is going to approve it so long as it meets one, one of those, And so long as it meets all four of those criteria. Otherwise, for any other alteration to a residential, non-conforming structure, It's still gotta go through the ZBA and they're going to apply The detrimental effect on neighboring property. Is that? Is that the jet, is that the gist? Well, I guess the question, well, yeah, is that the gist of what we Of how we've been discussing this?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah. I just want to make sure that I under, okay.
You, you nailed it.
Awesome. So I think what we want to do is reorganize that because I'm not getting I'm not, what I just said, I don't know that I'd get out of the green text. It's showing up in the screen on my screen. Uh, maybe it's right on your screen. Um, because again, there's the may And because those criteria are at the end, after we talk about ZBA. And so I wonder if like The planning manager shall approve it, or you know, will approve it. If it, if it meets all four of these criteria, otherwise, and then you can say the alteration Shall be approved by the zoning board of appeals upon finding, and then the rest of that sentence. I think that that will help make clearer, maybe.
So you want, you want the, the standards in, inserted Along with the planning manager's statement and then the ZBA below that. So you want the body of these In, in the, and do you want these four criteria in the body of the language?
I think so, because I think that that's, I think that It'll clear it up. I think it'll, it would have taken out a lot of this conversation.
And shall, she needs to be put for may.
Yeah.
To planning manager.
Yeah. I think that that's the right thing. And again, I'm sure it'll go through your legal people, but I think that that If that's the simple explanation, like I think the reorganization and that change of the may to shall will get that across.
Got it.
Commissioner Norton.
Okay, could I ask? I'm, I'm trying to read and process and listen to Sarah all at the same time. Sarah, could you say just one more time? What's the key difference that they're trying to do here?
So what they're trying to do is, and we're talking about B, so you're looking in B. The key difference is that the alteration Meeting all four of these criteria Will or shall be approved by the planning manager, an alteration to a residential, non-conforming structure. Full stop, like after meeting those four criteria. Otherwise, any alteration to a residential, non-conforming structure that doesn't meet those criteria Can go to the ZBA, shall go to the ZBA. can go to the ZBA, shall go to the ZBA, and then the ZBA has to have that finding that it complies um, as nearly as practical with the requirements of this chapter and will not have the detrimental effect.
But that's, that's applying the same standard. I guess now what I'm trying to figure out, and maybe Mr. Barrett is, what's the key distinction between when a, a perm, uh, request should be approved? And what's, what we're really trying to do is shift from more of a discretionary ZBA approval to a ministerial zoning administrator approval. And there are things that are happening that should get that administrative approval. And it's in these cases where these criteria apply. But if these criteria apply, are we still saying what you just laid out? Commissioner Mills is basically saying the zoning administrator can prove it if they meet these criteria. And if they can't, the ZBA shall approve it, but only if it meets these criteria. There's no.
No, it's moving, this is the reorder, ordering. So those criteria, it doesn't even go to the ZBA if it meets those criteria. If it goes to the, if it doesn't meet those criteria, then it goes to the ZBA and then it's not this criteria. It's this vague, again.
Well, it won't.
Detrimental effect on neighboring property. But I would also say, if we don't like that, then we gotta change A as well. Because we've got the same thing for the nonconforming structures and nonresidential is this detrimental effect on neighboring property. So I hear Commissioner Weatherby, like that is what I'm grappling with in my brain, but I think.
That's really important. I mean, what I think you're trying to capture is there are times when there's a nonconforming structure. It's nonconforming not because of the use or the activity taking place. It's nonconforming because it just doesn't quite fit on the lot according to the current setbacks and such. So they're not really changing the use of their structure. They're not changing the nonconformity in the sense of making it allowing something to happen that's not otherwise happening. Maybe a little bit more density and activity. But we're, we've decided, I guess, as a city, policy wise, that's not a bad thing. And we're trying to streamline the process. So um, why not just get rid of, if we're gonna head in this direction and recognize that if you're, all you're doing is fixing something inside that doesn't otherwise affect the nonconformity, let's just approve it. And get rid of the, of the A unless it has a detrimental effect on the neighbors. If in fact, none of these have ever had a detrimental effect on the neighbors. And even if someone made that allegation, we're not sure how we would process that assertion anyways. Right? So the four criteria that are listed here are a lot cleaner and easier to understand. And if those are the things we're really worried about with regard to these kinds of alterations, those probably ought to be the only criteria that we relate to. And, and if those are readily determined by the planning administrator, let's have the planning administrator do it, not make them run through all the hoops that they don't need to run through by going through the planning commission. Is that lining up with where you all are headed or thinking?
We shall see. Uh, let's go first to Commissioner Mills and then to Commissioner Abrams.
I guess I'll restate my question to see about that. I took the, the four numbered criteria as a subset of all of the non, residential nonconforming structures that might go before the ZBA. The easy ones, the ones that always get approved. I guess my question to Mr. Barrett is if there are other, I think Dick's proposal would effectively say the only kind of nonconforming structure that you can make a change to has to be one of these four criteria. Are there other kinds of things? Are there other non, uh, alterations to nonconforming structures that don't fit those criteria that we still should go to ZBA? My sense is yes, but I want to double check, make sure that's the case.
The ones that I can only think of are the interior ones with new, create a new habitable space and additions that don't quite meet the setbacks usually. And they're not gonna go any further encroach into a setback. They're either gonna go along the existing setback that's not conforming, or they're gonna be less nonconforming. So those are, we basically additions and interior. Those are the two types. And I did, by an addition, I mean like a second story addition, a, a bump out for a bathroom, a bump out for a sunroom, new space in the attic, new space in the basement.
If there's a bump out for a sunroom on the side that is close, and so it extends the nonconformity, I guess the question is, can it go to the ZBA?
It would have to. If it, if it increases or extends the nonconforming, then it's going to the ZBA for a variance.
And.
Well, let's, let's say the home has a five foot side setback and they want to do a, a bump out and, and make it, and the, and the home sits at three feet and they want to go to the two foot mark and increase it one foot. That's a variance and it goes to the zoning board of appeals for a variance. And then they have to meet the five tests, the five findings of facts.
The five findings of facts, not this one finding of fact.
There's five for a variance and there's one for an alteration to a nonconforming structure.
Got it. Is there, okay. I mean, uh, this, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop talking. It just raises more questions to me about like, what, why only residential here then and not why, not nonresidential, but I'll stop.
All right, let's uh, let Commissioner Abrams chime in.
I think that exchange clarified or helped to clarify part of what I was going to say, but I was gonna respond to what Commissioner Norton was asking by saying, uh, I think we, we need to keep the ZBA as an, as a fork in the road for things which don't meet criteria one through four. I think you were suggesting maybe that we don't. Because there could be things that, yeah, want to extend six inches closer to the lot line than they currently are, and those would need to go through the ZBA process. So I think reordering this paragraph B as we, as we have been discussing is something that we should do and that will help bring clarity. I think that the whole conversation around detrimental effect and commercial and versus residential, in a way, we should carve out as a separate conversation and maybe not let that hold up this text amendment, which could be fairly straightforward. And the other conversation, I think, could be more long and complex and we could find time and time for that. However, in this, in this most recent exchange, um, what just confused me, Mr. Barrett, was that, um, so if I wanted to build a sun porch and it extended a few inches further into my setback than my nonconforming structure was already good doing, in this new thing, I could not just do an administrative approval. I would go to the ZBA, but now you're saying it would be a more rigorous process than what currently exists because instead of just meeting the one finding of fact, there would be five?
That's correct, because you're increasing the nonconformity. You're not.
So that's currently, so it's currently true too. Currently, if I wanted to go six extra inches, I would do the five. I would need the variance.
Correct.
Okay, got it. So not making it more.
That process does not change.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
And can I say something about the detrimental effect on a neighboring property?
Yes, and I wanted to chime in here too, so go ahead.
If we, if we have, uh, someone from the public who is opposed and they come to a hearing and they want to give their feedback, it's really incumbent upon that person to um, display this detrimental effect to the board and convince the board that is the reason why this application should be denied because these are the detrimental effects and they really need to spell out their argument in a convincing fashion with solid facts and findings, rather than just, I don't like this project. And that's where the board, the members of the ZBA are analyzing this person's feedback and determining whether they feel like that meets this criteria. Is, if that, has this person convinced me that it truly is having a detrimental effect? Is, is this, uh, is this alteration gonna, I don't know, increase traffic? Is it gonna have an impact on noise? Is it gonna, if, impact my view shed? There, is it, is it gonna increase, um, stormwater runoff? There should be some factual, uh, arguments laid out, uh, expanding on that detrimental effect. And that's up to the board to decide whether that meets that, um, threshold or criteria in their minds of whether they should approve that alteration or not.
Thank you. Uh, planning manager, did you, Kelly, did you want to say something in here or you uh, just okay to wait till after Mr.?
I can wait.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Norton.
I'm kind of, um, if, uh, now you're okay. Um, well, I mean, this.
I mean, I can jump in if you all are just being polite, because I do have a comment.
Uh, my hand has been up for a while.
Oh.
Oh, you're, I, we have not seen your hand. I'm sorry, uh, council member Dish.
Oh, it says, and I put it up. Sorry, I put it down. Never mind.
I am not ignoring you.
Maybe I'll just, thi- this discussion is making me think even more that, um, following with Commissioner Mills' suggestion, new A ought to read, an alteration that meets the following four criteria, the four criteria listed here, shall be approved by the planning manager. If we make that change, will that capture all of these projects that you've been talking about that would have been approved now by that new process? By the planning manager that would not have gone, because I think what I heard you say is any other kind of change would probably trip a variance request anyways, and so that would go before the ZBA. So I'm, now I'm questioning, do we need to have, what kinds of projects could possibly come up? Where they're just altering this in structure internally, they're not making it any more nonconforming that wouldn't satisfy these criteria that also wouldn't create a variance request? Are there even projects now that would happen that we need to add the provision saying otherwise you go to the ZBA and it can't affect the neighbors?
I can't think of any.
So if that's the case, why do we need to add that provision? Uh, I'm not, I'm not asking you, Mr. Barrett, I'm kind of asking that rhetorically. And why, it, you're adding confusion where there doesn't need to be, um. And, and I think it's just cleaner to say, well, there are certain classes of projects. It's not, it's not increasing the nonconformity. It's all internal changes. And if they're straightforward, we should just let the planning administrator approve them.
Okay. Uh, we'll hear from you, Commissioner Dish.
I am trying to get clarity on this very point. Now, what I thought I understood and what I thought the Commissioner Abrams, like Abrams clarified was that B is spelling out that if you meet the four criteria, you shall be approved by the planning manager. But it could, but it could be the case that you are extending farther into your setback. And then you're gonna go to the ZBA and get a variance. And we don't wanna, we want it to be clear that if you don't meet those four criteria, it doesn't mean you're SOL. You can actually go to the ZBA and get a variance. So I, so what, what's not, it's, it's not clear to me. What, I, I, I am clear that the intent is to preserve the possibility of a ZBA process if you cannot meet these four criteria. And to eliminate the ZBA from the process if you do meet these four criteria. So I'm not sure. Uh, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure. Um, Commissioner Norton, what you're saying is, is a problem.
Yeah, this doesn't alter the variance provisions at all. So if they're doing something that's gonna trip a variance, they go to the V, ZBA to get a variance. Well, the provision that I'm suggesting we don't need anymore if these changes are made is the provision that currently says an alteration um, can be approved if it complies as nearly as practical with these requirements and it doesn't affect the neighboring property. Well, we now would be spelling out it with more clarity. What criteria you have to meet to get that alteration approval is pretty straightforward. And if in fact, you want to do something that's now pushing into a setback, you were gonna have to get a variance anyways. And this doesn't change that at all. The variance provisions aren't being affected at all. You would still have to go get a variance permission. Is that correct, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, sir.
So what are you asking to be taken out of this?
So I'm just suggesting there's no any, there's no longer, if we're, if we're simplifying this process and making it administratively approvable, if these four criteria are met, the, the, what's currently paragraph A is superfluous. It's not needed anymore.
But I think what you're saying, Mr. Norton, is maybe otherwise a variance shall be required by the zoning board of appeals if you don't meet these four correct criteria. So basically rework that right after otherwise, I see what, and change that to, it's not an alteration anymore. It's now a variance, shall be approved by the ZBA. And just, yep, I'll clean, I can.
I mean, that would be a point of clarity. Yeah. Other requests that would exceed, not meet these will require, go, require a variance, de-provision, yada, yada, yada. That would be fine.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
Planning manager Kelly. And then I want to chime in for a moment before we move on.
I think the point that I wanted to make was already addressed. It's been, I can't probably remember what I was, what I wanted to say now, but I, I think it was addressed.
Thank you. So I, um, liked the flow because that's where I was gonna go, uh, was where I think Commissioner Norton just landed, which is, I think we need to, um, potentially strike the language that says has a detrimental effect on neighboring property, unless we're gonna define what that is. So you have it defined, but if I'm just looking at the UDC, it is not clearly defined what that criteria is. So if we keep it in, we should define it. If we think it can be removed, we should propose that it be removed. I have no preference whether it's done with this text amendment that you are proposing or if it's done with an additional one, uh, um, with the suggestion that Commissioner Abrams made to try to separate them so that this could be a clean one. And then I wanted to just affirm what I heard Commissioner Norton say, that I think, um, clarifying that, when an alteration comes that, uh, increases the nonconformity, that triggers a variance and the variance has to go to ZBA. Because it seems like that's the only thing that you are holding as something that would have to go, because everything that's interior but doesn't change the nonconformity in a demonstrative way can be approved using the criteria that you've set out, or at least you haven't been able to identify a case where you needed to go in a different way, if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Barrett. So, yeah, so with that, it sounds like if I want to put a second story or a third story, because I guess I have a second story, and it comes over the 25 foot average that's on the five houses, because I don't think we have a, a set setback on our five houses. Um, that could trigger this, but it wouldn't rise to the level of a variance because it's, it's not really encroaching. It's, it's high. It's just sort of not meeting this standard that, that sits there and there's no sort of criteria where you wouldn't approve it. But because the, the way the UDC is written, I have to come, I have to wait two to three months. I have to pay a thousand dollars. I might have to get an architect or two to help me with all of this. And we want to sort of help, um, with our goals around housing and, and making our process streamlined. So if there's some way to sort of take that feedback and, and just delineate, um, hey, if you're going to do something that increases the nonconformity, then that's going to trigger a variance and that goes to ZBA and we can just reference how that process works already in the code. So those were, were my comments, um, to this. What else do we have, commissioners?
I did remember what I was going to ask.
All right.
Uh, I was going to ask Mr. Barrett what, um, the staff discussions were related to leaving A, um, and continuing to distinguish the nonresidential structures. I don't know if you pulled information on how many of those have come before the ZBA recently. Uh, if there is more opposition to them, uh, if the ZBA has, um, found that they're often approving these in the same way that they're approving. I'm sure the frequency is less overall than like additions to a a residential.
At this time, I can't think of any commercial properties or commercial structures that've come to the GBA for an alteration to them. And for the most part, if they're gonna do an alteration, it's generally gonna get captured by the site plan requirement. It's gonna end. It's going to end up going to site plan anyway. So I can't think of any commercial property that's added a second story or, um, an addition. Our threshold is pretty low. It captures a site plan requirement at 300 square feet. And so in, in my tenure, I can't think of one single commercial property or commercial building that has had to go through this process. It's, it's supplemented by the site plan review process.
So as long as, uh, we are clarifying, considering other options, perhaps we can stress test that a little bit more to see if there would be any harm in applying, uh, the changes to all structures.
Okay.
If, if you're amenable to that. So we'll consider that before it goes to the commission table.
Thank you, planning manager Kelly. Any other commissioners? Mr. Barrett, do you think, uh, you received the feedback that you were seeking?
I have some homework to do. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for bringing this, uh, to us. Thanks for improving our unified development code for all users of it, uh, in the city. And we look forward to, uh, when this returns and comes to the table.
You're welcome. And this truly was initiated by the zoning board of appeals that, and I'm, I'm here upon their request. They asked me to take some direction on this text amendment, so.
Well, thank you. If there isn't anything else, I will go to our second opportunity for public comment. So there is a second opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any issue. We will hear from any of our participants who have raised their hands. It does not look like anyone has, but I spoke it into existence. So, uh, the planning manager will, uh, call on you and give you permission to speak and address, uh, the commission. Uh, let's see, you'll hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure you're in a quiet area, meeting in background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Planning manager Kelly.
Mr. Stalberg gave permission to address the commission for three minutes.
Thank you. It's Tom Stalberg again, 1202 Traver Street in Ann Arbor. Uh, I think this was an excellent discussion. I know probably not a lot of people watching. Uh, but I really want to thank you for, uh, a well-thought-out discussion. And I want to thank our newest planning commissioner for what were excellent questions and participation as well. Uh, I did want to disclose that these changes, if you adopt them, uh, will benefit me. I've got some nonconforming properties and I've actually got somebody looking to do a project. And we were planning on going to the ZBA for the project, uh, but, uh, if we don't have to, we won't. Uh, but thank you anyhow. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Stalberg, for your comments. Giving it a moment in case our other participant wants to address the commission. All right, seeing none. Uh, there are no communications in tonight's packet. And so I don't even think we have to adjourn the meeting. So goodbye, everyone. Have a great rest of your evening.